I'd like to call the order, the common council meeting for September 14th, 2021 at 6:07 PM. Roll call.
Alderman's Madden.
Here.
Kabaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Kapusta.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. I'm going to jump to the public hearing first and we'll come back to public comment. That's okay. Public hearing to consider the petition of John Merrick to rezone property known as tax key number 2299.992.006 located at South 81 West 20871 Russet Court from RS1 suburban residence district to RS2 suburban residence district for the purposes, for the purpose of allowing a future single-family subdivision. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. So, one thing I'll start with, due to issues that the Wachshaf Freeman, which is our current legal newspaper, had when we had some power outages a few, what, weeks ago, month ago, they were not able to run a print newspaper for a couple days in a row. They were only allowed to do digital papers. Talking with Jeff and looking at statutory requirements, we're required to post, publish, public hearing notice in print papers, meeting all the statutory requirements. So because of that, we missed one of our publications, the paper did. And looking at that then, our only option was to really restart this process. So it pushed the developer back due to no fault of their own. Because of that, we have a provision in our ordinance in unique scenarios, which we definitely felt this, this fell into, where we can kind of take rezoning requests in a little different process. So what we did in this case is it went to plan commission first, which happened last week. And then tonight is the public hearing, and then it will go back to common counsel in front of you again in two weeks from tonight for final read, second reading, final reading, and possible action. So the plan commission already reviewed this, and it may go back in front of them depending on the comments that come back tonight. So just wanted to give you a little heads up. So the general request is rezoning from RS1 suburban residence district to an RS2 suburban residence district. The biggest difference between that zoning, two zoning districts, RS1 requires 30,000 square foot minimum and RS2 requires 20,000 square foot minimum. This did go through the plan commission for conceptual review also a few meetings ago, and it did receive favoritism from the conceptual review. And the plan commission did give a tentative positive recommendation at its meeting last week. The proposal would yield 10 lots with one outlot. The developers kind of, I think, ran some preliminary numbers. If they didn't have the rezoning, they still think they could yield about eight lots. So the rezoning gives them about a two lot difference in this area. There is a part of the development, we'll start over, they're looking at some density. When we look at density, they're proposing about 1.4 or 5 units per acre. That falls well within the land use categories that are currently set aside in that area. So they are not asking for a land use amendment, just that change to the zoning, which will really affect lot size and lot width.
All right. Do you have any questions before the public hearing? You want to take the?
It fits in with the area, right?
Yeah. If you look at the general area, there's kind of a mix of RS1, RS2, just depends which direction you go. There is one neighborhood that's two lots to the south that is under RS1, that these two could connect someday, but not a noticeable difference in layout. There is RS2 in the general vicinity.
Adam, the plan commission had raised a question about the elevation of a pond. Had that been resolved?
I wouldn't say resolved, because it's, they're not there yet. But looking at topography, we did look at the topography. They're proposing the pond in the southeast corner of the site. There is over a 20-foot topography difference. There is a wetland area kind of in the north central part of this site that they are proposing to try to get a DNR permit to fill. And that is a slight depression in that area. I'm not saying that's the lowest spot, but the southeast corner of the site is significantly lower when you look at the county topography. And I'm not talking a foot or two, I'm talking like over a 20-foot difference. And that's why they are putting the pond in that southeast corner. Yes, the wetlands that are there are a little depression, I won't deny that, but by no means the lowest spot on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess the conversation that came up for that was, the engineering is going to be the engineering. It's, it really doesn't have anything to do with the zoning. It's...
Yeah, I mean, stormwater is very often a concern brought up, but the thing, easy thing, is stormwater is always addressable. It's one of the easiest addressable things with today's technologies when it comes to how they drain sites.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
At this time, anyone who would like to, oh, sorry.
No. Over the years, that's, this is the edge of our, our development over in there as far as residential areas and so forth. So this is extending to the west farther than most housing has been in that area, although we've already done that to the south of it, correct, with fireside?
Yeah, fireside orchard, which would be very similar to this, is just two lots to the south.
Yeah, it's absorbing a little bit more into the developed areas as we go west towards old landfill out there.
Yeah, and west of this site immediately is owned by the landfill, so nothing can go further west beyond this property, at least not here.
Just points you might want to think about while we're discussing it afterwards.
Any other comments from the council? At this point, anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this matter, please come forward, state your name, address.
Hello. My name is Dan Feifield. I live at S81W20845 Russet Court.
One second, I just want to make sure she has.
Can you speak a little slower?
Okay, sorry. All right, yeah, it's S81W20845 Russet Court.
And your name again?
Dan Feifield.
All right. Thank you.
So we're actually just on the east side of this plan or the change. I have a couple of concerns, and I think some of them were just addressed. One is drain water. With that many properties up there and that much more pavement, where is the water going to go? The other thing is, I do believe that's going to cause our road to be expanded. So I'm a little concerned that I'm going to lose some of my front yard. And I don't know what we can do about that. So those are my probably two big concerns about this. And obviously, a lot more traffic. When I moved there, I was, I was, knew there was going to be houses put up there someday, but I didn't think there was going to be that many put up there. So, thank you.
And as this gentleman's walking up, I just want to explain to the crowd, this is a public hearing, so the information typically is one way. You guys talk to us, we cannot by law, like, interact with you on it. We can have discussions amongst ourselves later on in the agenda, but right now, it's just, we're listening.
All right, Nick Wagner, addresses, west 208, south 8119. I own the property, six acres directly north of this property, looking at being rezoned. I object to it. A few things that I look at is, 11 years ago, I purchased this property for the simple fact is, for conservation, it allowed an opportunity to, like, a deer hunt on the property, you could shoot a firearm on the property. I checked with the ordinance with Muskego, they allowed it. I could discharge a firearm. If this zoning goes through, one thing is, it's going to infringe on my rights and my land use. You have to be 300 feet from a dwelling, it's 100 yards from a dwelling, to discharge a firearm illegally. And if you look at where my property is and what the size of the lots are, the distance is, it's going to cut over half of my property that is unusable, unhuntable, et cetera. I went into the, before I even, when I purchased my property 11 years ago, I went into the city, I asked if I could, before I purchased that property, if I could get it rezoned. Because I've done home building, remodeling, et cetera. And I said it's zoned right now for single-family only. At that time, planning, I know it changes over time, but they said absolutely not. It's zoned for single-family. I purchased it off, my neighbor just to the east. So that stopped there. I've been a resident there for 11 years. It's secluded, and there's a wetlands area. I also object to filling in that wetlands area. That wetland area does fill up. Every spring it fills up, it's probably two, three foot deep. It fills up, probably on a hard rain, you go out there and it grabs groundwater, it does dry up in July, August timeframe. I would say, and I don't know if it's completely dry, because it all depends on how the erosion of the land is and what the, how the landscape is. If it's gravel, shale, sand, what type of mixture that is, and how the glacier went through, and how it shelves. It does, the mallard ducks do breed there. So I mean, taking away wildlife, I don't understand why we'd want to fill in one section to, basically, it's become so they can put two more lots on that property than they want to take a retention pond and put all the drain water on the opposite side. Whether they say that's a high part of the property, I say no. You can see on topo maps, and people can see topo maps, you can come over to my backyard and look, it rises up in elevation, and their current residence is higher than where the, the wetlands is. So it is not at the highest point of elevation it shows. And then, you know, the thing is, I just, I just wonder, when you start looking, and like last week, I'm asked, do you oppose the subdivision or, or, you know, and that, and I'm like, well, you know, I don't oppose the having the subdivision. When I was, when I bought there, they said there might be four houses. Now all of a sudden, it goes to 10. Well, how did it go from four to 10? Granted, on fireside, they did stub a road. So of course, with planning commission, whatever, that was all in the works and talked about through either the city or developers or whoever. I didn't even research or look into that. But at some point in time, that must have been discussed and planned, like, what if? I look at not only myself, some of the other people in the area. There's a, a small little hobby horse farm. You put more houses in that area, what does that do? It's just a proven time before it drives people out. Because more and more people you put in these areas, more and more people complain, more and more issues, you know, come. So I don't understand that. And we're going to look at rezoning. When you start looking at a map and you start picking out who's really at a, what is it, 20,000 square feet for a lot around there? There's not many. If, I'd have to really look, but a lot of them are .7 acres, .69 acres, .8 acres, .18, .9 acres, 1.0 acres. You can look right, right on the map, and you can see all this. So I don't understand why we want to consider this rezoning to put that many houses in. You know, then, then I look at, you know, another thing is, like, gentleman said, the road. Well, right now, they got a single driveway, they put all their garbage cans at the end of the road. So there's going to be all different traffic, the road's going to be widened, drainage ditches. Right now, if you guys go down Hillendale, when it really rains, that whole road's flooded over at times. You get these heavy rains, those ditches are flooded. So then, once again, you're going to pour more groundwater, you know, disperse all that, you're putting more homes, it's more surface area. Then the city needs to start considering what they're going to do with Hillendale. You know, what we're going to do. So it's, it, you know, it's always one thing. Like, you know, I do remodeling, and it's one thing. Somebody says, what can you do for this? Well, by the time you say, yeah, I can easily do that, but it's 10 more things. And if you don't look into all those 10 things, you know, all of a sudden, you say, well, what if? So I just, guess I'm just trying to point out some things that I think, you know, we need to consider before we go forward, you know, with moving forward on rezoning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tenille Goodhue.
I'm sorry. Can you spell your last name?
G-O-O-D-H-U-E.
And your address?
West 208, South 8241 Hillendale Drive. So I own that little horse farm. That's just south of this property. Now, I've only owned it for a little, about a year. But my parents, I bought this farm from my parents, who owned it just over 25 years. So when we bought this property, we moved out to Muskego for the rural community. I had a 12-acre property north of me, 10-acre property south of me. The next two properties south of me were each six acres. The half of the two six-acre properties, so I think about three acres each, and then that 10-acre property became the fireside subdivision. Now, for me, the biggest concern is water. In having this property, we have multiple times had major, and still do have major water issues. Unfortunately, I believe it was the county, not the city, came through and redid Janesville Road a couple years after my parents bought the place, broke all the original drain tiles. If you look up the history on the property, there are parts of my property that were, in working with the city, raised more than six feet. Now, the fireside community came in. And the water from that, that subdivision there has caused us water issues that we're still dealing with. And I'm still looking at having to bring up some type of plan of my own to, to you guys eventually, or to the planning commission, to try and fix. I have areas in my property that I can't use for most of spring and summer because the property south of me was actually razed. And is now, the elevation on that property is now higher than my property. Now, the wetlands in that, in the southeast corner, there is a small wetland there. Now, I can tell you, I grew up riding horses on that, on that 12-acre property that, this property we're talking about is part of, for years, that pond that's at the top, for large parts of the year has had water in it. That wasn't something that was normally dry. I know, I used to take the horses and ride them through it, or the ponies. I'm very concerned about the water issues and, and the density as well. I don't want to be chased out of this community. And that's a big concern for me. We did get, we've gotten lucky so far with our neighbors south to, south of us. But the density you make that, the more I'm likely to have to move farther out. And I went to Muskego Schools, I've been here since the seventh grade. My son, my son has graduated from Muskego Schools. You know, this is a property that I wanted to sell him eventually, and he wanted to buy. Surrounded, and there's already, you know, I, I know the planning commission has already planned that my property eventually will be subdivided. They tried to convince us to sell when they put in that fireside community. They put a road right up to my fence line so that that could happen. I want to keep my land. And I want to keep being able to use it as we want it. And I'm concerned that, you know, with the density here that we're talking about, I'm less and less likely to be able to sustain that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. My name's Robert Cerwinski, C-Z-E-R-W-I-N-S-K-I. I live at west 208, South 8151 Hillendale Drive. I live right in front of where the wetland is that they're considering filling. Right now, when it fills up, the water goes right down my neighbor's area and then makes a turn over my driveway, where I have to go manage it to try to get it to go out to the street. I dug a, a culvert, somewhat of a ditch, sort of water coming out of his yard goes around and all.
Please talk into the microphone, sorry.
Well, you're dead anyway, right?
We did, but the recordings got.
Okay. I dug a culvert next to my driveway, sort of water that overflows from the wetland goes out to the culvert. Prior to that, was washing my driveway out every season. Two-yard tippers, once a season, I take my snowplow and grade my driveway. Never knew who to complain about, about it, I just did it. If they fill in the wetland, I'm going to get more water. To me, the wetland has to be bigger. They want to make it smaller. What they're building back there, I would, you know, if it was four or five houses, fine, 10 houses, we're all going to get water. It's going to be 10 roofs, 10 driveways, everybody's going to get more water. If you can figure that out, you know, that's up to you guys and how you work on things. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Yes, I do.
Anyone else? Hearing none. I'll declare this public hearing closed at 6:26. All right. You guys want to do, jump back to cow or?
Other than some people can leave, or we have other people waiting for other reasons? I mean, what's the? Oh, everybody else left today. We probably should have told them to hang around, we probably could have went through that.
There's two readings, so they're going to have mostly discussions, the second reading anyway.
Okay, whatever you want to do.
All right. Let's jump back in, let's jump back to the committee of the whole and finish up budget, get staff out of here, and then go from there. So, putting the common council meeting into adjournment at 6:27, and reconvening the committee of the whole at the same time. You're good on everything you need? Let me know when you're ready to proceed.
Yeah.
Continuing on with the common council agenda, we are at public comment. Anyone like to address the council on any agenda item? This is your opportunity. Going once? Twice? All right. Moving on to communications to the mayor's office, I have none. So consent agenda. Motion to, or, I'll be looking for a motion for approval of the common council minutes from August 24th, an acquisition contract and authorization, authorized signatures for budget approval expenditures over $50,000 for carpet installation at Muskego Library for $119,554,000. Resolution 078, 2021, approval of a two-lot, two-lot extraterritorial certified survey map for the Kendra property located in the town of Norway. Resolution 079, 2021, resolution of eligibility for exemption from the county library tax levy for 2022. Resolution 080, 2021, approval of mon reduction for Home Path Financial LP cobblestone. Resolution 081, 2021, approval of a letter of credit reduction for P-Gar, P-Gar, how do you say? P-Gar, okay. LLP. Resolution 082, 2021, reapproval of a certified survey map and condominium plot for cobblestone metals development. And resolution 083, 2021, reapproval of a certified survey map for Home Path Financial.
Move to proven gross.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business. Resolution 029, 2021, establish traffic regulations, no parking signs on Park Drive. It was on the floor and deferred on March 23rd, 2021, and it has found its way back to the common council. Can someone move to put it back onto the, do we need, if it's on the floor, we need to do anything? We just start? All right, we're good. So, discussion.
So it's on the floor? Okay.
Any comments?
I don't get this.
I don't either.
I'm sorry, I just don't, to block off that short bit of street doesn't make sense.
It's just like in the middle of a section, and it's from a certain time to a certain time, right?
Yeah.
So, so the idea originally was, there was complaints from the condominiums about what was largely suspected to be teenagers coming through specifically in the summer, parking their cars, going down and trespassing through the condominium plot onto the beach in the middle of the night. Is that a good synopsis of what the issue was? So the thought was, by doing this, no parking there, it might have an impact on that. It came from a recommendation from public services. I can tell you, this summer, we did not get the, to my understanding, there has not been any trouble from the police that they are aware of, and nothing was reported.
And I think that's the reason we deferred it, to see if that was.
This made it back on because we deferred it to this date? Is that what it was, we six months?
It wasn't a specific, it wasn't a specific.
So, no one asked for it to come back on, is what I'm asking, right? It just, it just reappeared because we, we said.
But we have to do something with it, because it's sitting out there.
Yeah, we said we would look at it further down the road, that's why it's back on. Okay, I, I just want to make sure.
This was not a citizen's request to bring back.
And then, and then, I guess, like Kevin said, you're going to block off one side of the street, but then before and after it, across the street's open?
This was not my recommendation.
I know. So, I, do we just shelve this, or do we vote on it, or what do you got to do?
Alderman Kapusta, this is your district, and it busts to your home, so what are your thoughts on this?
If you go back and remember, they asked for a 10:00 PM to a 6:00 AM no parking. That was the whole conjecture. We had tons of issues last summer. Looks like this summer, we've had no issues. So, we had one summer that was terrible, and one summer that was no issues. And I did recuse myself from the voting on it last time, so.
So, my.
You have, nobody contacted you or anything, nothing?
No, we've, we've asked everybody in there to make sure they contact the police department.
But I mean, nobody's contacted you about?
Not at all.
Okay.
My recommendation would be to leave it status quo, not put the signs up.
And if it comes up again?
If it pops up again, then we reissue it, but it seems like it may have been a, it would, may have been an anomaly, hopefully.
I agree. Do we need to vote on that then?
We need to, what was the original motion that's on the floor, to approve? So, we would need to take a vote, and everyone vote nay on it. Deny, so. So, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
They need a motion, Mayor.
No, they, they, well, the motion is to approve, so we can leave it as is. Yeah. So we want everyone to not, we don't want any aye votes. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Sounds like it was fixed.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, that took care of that. There is no new business. We have review of committee reports from park conservation committee from August, from October 19th, 2020? Is that right? Seems awful old. And a plan commission from July 15th, 2021, and August 3rd, 2021, for your review. First reading of ordinance is impossible, second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance number 1463, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the city of Muskego from Merrick Russell Court, RS1 to RS2. This is only the first reading, it will come back for a second reading. Is there any comments or questions or further information anyone needs before the second meeting? Or would you like to hear anything from the developer at this point?
No, I, I just got a question, because it seemed to be a theme here, and it seemed to be more wetland talk than I've heard in, in a long time, and transferring it over to one. Maybe you can kind of tell us, or, about the wetlands, about the, the difference if you put eight to 10 homes in. It seems like, it sounds like it's a problem that it's going to create more wetlands for other people. And, and then also, right next to is the fireside subdivision, how that stacks up size-wise to what this proposal is.
Yeah, what are the average lot sizes in fireside?
So, Adam can address all those in a second. I just want to point out a couple things, and you are correct. So, it's not that this site won't be developed, it's a matter of two more home lots, so you got to decide the density of what you believe is proper in this area. Sometimes those two extra lots can make all the difference in the world for the neighbors, sometimes it won't make a difference. I, I can't say. That's for you to decide. Stormwater and, like, the wetlands and all that have nothing to do with rezoning.
Right, right, I understand. Engineering.
And, and they're going to have, they're going to have to resolve all of those problems, even if we, even if we approve.
So he can say what, what constitutes wetland, the highland, lowland, and where it's going.
Right. And I'll let him talk in a second, but I just want to make clear that, you know, I get.
And just a sidebar, the, the regulations for groundwater have changed so dramatically over the years, even since fireside was built, that usually, situations improve with new developments.
Hopefully, right?
Yes.
There you go.
Use, use the other one. Hello? Talking about stormwater, yeah, stormwater rules, our stormwater rules stem from Metro Milwaukee sewage district and the DNR. So if they're not our rules, they're given to us, and they only get more and more strict as time goes by. So where some rules, I'll use wetlands as an example, the state allows a lot more flexibility with filling the wetlands now. On the opposite end, the stormwater requirements are a lot more strict. MMSD is some of the strictest stormwater requirements, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but they do anywhere. Some people cringe when they find out that, oh, we're so far from Milwaukee, yet we're still in their sewage district because there's such intense stormwater requirements. So yeah, I like to agree that stormwater only gets better. They don't just look at the site like it's a little bubble, they have to look at the drainage basins that even drain into that site. So offsite drainage is looked at as part of it, and yeah, they have an engineered design. So offsite drainage is looked at as part of it and yeah, they have an engineer designed it to meet all the requirements and then our engineers vet that and check that to make sure it's legit and there's always changes. So, water issues, drainage issues should only be better. On the topic of the wetlands, you know, wetlands are ultimately regulated by federal regulation that trickles down to the state. Any kind of wetland fill is jurisdiction of the DNR. And like I said, DNR restrictions have only gotten more lenient with wetland fill. If it's under a certain amount, I think you need a permit, but like it's almost a gimme automatically. I believe in this case, they want to go a little larger than that, but there's a process defined through the DNR.
So they, they can move the wetlands over a little bit?
They might, I don't know, for something like this, I mean, this is really small in the scale of some big wetland complexes, I don't think remediation, which would be like replacing it somewhere else comes into play here. I'm not an expert on it and those, those people that do the wetland stuff are very specific, just that's their baby. This area, you know, it, it's not the highest point of the lot, it's on a higher portion of the lot compared to where they want to put their stormwater. I mean, stormwater engineers, the first thing they do when they look at a lot is say, where's the lowest point on the entire property? That's where we want to try to get our storm pond, because why try to get water to go where it doesn't already want to go? Does that mean water gets rerouted? Yeah, possibly. I would expect this development would have curb and gutter, meaning storm sewer, meaning that, you know, any drainage that goes to the roads will make it into a storm sewer system, which will go to the pond, as well as there will be swales on the lots, backs, fronts, sides, wherever, to catch water to get it to go where the engineers want it to go. And then the size of the pond feature is dictated by the MMSD and DNR rules.
And then the other one is the fireside.
Yeah, so fireside is RS 1 right now, 30,000 square foot minimum. This is a 20,000 is what they're requesting, the existing zoning would put them at 30,000. So it is a slightly smaller lot, a third smaller in this scenario. Will that visually look different? No, because lot width is what you notice when you're driving by more than anything and lot width, I believe is only a 10 foot minimum difference. So the lots will look 10 foot narrower potentially, which I don't think you're going to notice that to the eye.
And one other question I forgot to bring up that was brought up, it sounded like a concern, I don't know if it is or isn't, the drain tiles when they put Janesville Road in, they somebody brought up they were broken. Is there anything that is going through that property in the same, that could be broken as well or do we know anything about that?
There's no easy way to know where drain tile is until it's hit. There's, I don't know all the details, but there's, I believe it's a state statute that talks about if during construction drain tiles encounter, which usually they see it, they know when they hit something, they are responsible for like reconnecting and rerouting. The person that mentioned that project, it sounded like when I got the DNR, or I'm sorry, the county handled it because it was a county project. But yeah, I mean, if they know they disturbed something, they are responsible for reconnecting and fixing. Sometimes that might make, make it just go to a storm pond or something.
Okay, I just tried bringing up the concerns I heard, so.
Sure. The developer has to be able to speak as well, any objections? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I can address quite a number of the issues that were talked about with regards to water. Before the project is developed, the water is going to go wherever it decides to go. Once we develop it and once the engineers develop a stormwater management plan, it's going to go exactly where the engineers tell it to go, which is going to be into lowest point of the property, which is the southeast corner. The wetlands that are intended to be filled, according to the delineator, he believes that was at some point dug out, it's not a natural wetland. In other words, it was a pond for somebody to go swim in many, many years ago. It is also that, that particular pond is currently filled with invasive species, which the DNR would like to get rid of. When we build our new pond, it's going to be filled with native species of grasses and flowers and all those things that the native wildlife like for around this area. One fellow had a concern about losing his front yard. The fact is that the right of way for Russet Court in a normal city street already exists, so he's not going to lose any of his front yard. He may be losing part of what he uses, or he deems may be part of his land, but it's not, it belongs to the city, it's your right of way. Regarding RS 2, the two lots on the way into Russet Court on both the north and south side of the drive are already zoned RS 2 and are already smaller lots. So, the, the new subdivision with RS 2 zoning would comply with what's already there. We do plan on using curb and gutter in order to direct the stormwater into the pond. It is about 26 feet lower than the pond, the current elevation of the current pond. It's a natural place to put it on the southeast corner of the property. I think I've covered everything, questions for me?
That's a wet pond then? That would become a wet pond or a?
Our current plan is that that would be a detention pond and not a retention pond. The, we've done soil borings, the depths of the seasonal high groundwater are south of 20 feet, which means that that's very good drainage soil and we would assume that that detention pond will dry out, just as that pond is, the pond that's here right now, if you walked out there today, it's dry bone, bone dry.
Does anybody have a history of what, we've been through a couple of wet years and other areas, I know we've had water standing where we haven't had it in years north of there. And did that wetland hold water during these last two summers before? This summer's been much drier.
I have spoke with the current owner of the property, who's been there for 18 years and Julie's in the back and her comment is that pond is dry.
And was dry the last two summers previous? That must drain better than a lot of areas north of it.
It, again, the, for seasonal high groundwater marks, to be south of 20 feet, it drains very, very well.
So the question on the, on the zoning, again, we'll go back to the eight to 10 houses, just so that we get an idea and the people around them get an idea what's at. The, the first part would be two smaller lots and if you were to still stay with the current zoning, would, you wouldn't be able to put eight more buildings on the backside then? You would, you'd have to put what, six more on then or five more on? Because we're talking eight to 10, so you already have two that are RS 2.
Those two don't count.
Oh, they don't count? They're not in the development, that's already existing homes there?
That's accurate.
Okay, I thought you meant you would build on them.
No.
Okay.
No, those, those are already there, that, one of the fellows that spoke that was concerned about losing part of his front yard.
Okay, got it.
He owns one of those homes.
Okay, got it. Okay, I got no questions then.
Thank you, sir.
So what would be the number with RS 1?
RS 1 would be eight, eight lots and then you would, with the rezoning.
No, two and three, isn't it?
What? The existing zoning there allows him to have eight lots.
Eight would be the maximum on?
Right.
Existing.
The rezoning would give it two additional.
Just for clarity.
Yes.
RS 1 and 2.
Thank you.
The other, there was one other question I thought I had Adam do some work on today. Mr. Wagner, the property just adjoining it with large had bought the property, his property, so he could hunt on it. He had mentioned that.
Oh, that's right.
So we did have, with hunt, with hunting regulations, you got to be so far from a residence. So we did have maps drawn up of, here's his current, the red area is his current and this is his property here. Perfect, if you got more, I wasn't sure if you had more. But I guess, and you'll see, he does, his available hunting land does get cut almost in half with the rezon, with, when it's developed. The rezoning, I can't say would make any difference because the.
Eight or 10 homes.
The eight homes there would still be there and it's not going to change that footprint hardly at all, so I don't know if rezoning would have any impact on that. I think we're done with any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can have that. So, you can.
It is a public hearing regards about what it said.
It's not a public hearing right now.
Okay, well, what was just said, I would like to speak on behalf.
It's up to the council.
May I please speak? Because the audience had left, we should have had people listen or whatever. Can I just please speak for a moment, please?
It's up to the council.
Okay. When, some of these things are said, I totally agree with, but some of the other things that are said, if you look back, that pond that's wetland was not dug by anyone. It's on a map dated back in the 50s and it's on, if you look on X Hunt, it shows, I could show you the property right now with wetlands, a mapping system does not mark wetlands if somebody digs a pond. So, some of these things like, what I hear is a lot of common sense. I mean, the drainage water, of course, it's going to go where engineer says. There's a lot of that stuff that's said. And I agree with it, but I also look at, if we're going to fill in two, like we're, we're planning on developing two lots right over the wetlands, okay? If the, two lots go over the wetlands, last week it said that if it's eight lots, I can't do the development. Financially, it doesn't make sense. I need my 10 lots. Okay, but if we, if we're filling in a wetland that has been there and I look at like what's going to go on with the groundwater, well, sure, of course it's going to get diverted. That's why we, we have excavators and engineers and all that. But what I look at is this area, how it affects and what we're going to actually do and use this property for, you know, I look at how many houses, I look around fireside. If you look on that, like Adam had said, they're all three quarters of an acre lot. You go down the block on opposite side, they're all one acre, acre and a half lot, there's two lots that are half acre lots along Russet Court. The rest of them are three quarters acre, acre and a half. At what point, like I, I did purchase out there, you know, to say, hey, I want to be on the outskirts of the city. I raised my son here, it's a beautiful city to be in. You know, we had a, we raised our family, that's why we built. And I look at like what goes on now, of course, it's going to give more opportunity to, two more families maybe, but it also is like that density, the population and all that, where does that end up? And where does that stop on something like this? The next farmland, do we go across Hillendale and we keep pushing out and pushing out? Like, when is that going to stop in some of these areas? And then the people that have been there, we're just approaching, 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 like the lady set the horse from, you will run her out, there's no doubt. It can be a family farm, you will run them, run them out. The closer you get, you get people that will complain or whatever, that's going to happen. It's just a matter of time. I don't want to be run out. I love, I love being here, the convenience and all here. I see this map for the first time. It would have been nice after the meeting if planning went through this, I could have got a phone call and said, hey, Nick, you know what? We ran a map, so you could see, if I walked out of there, I wouldn't even see this map. So for public knowledge and sitting up here at the council, I'll say, I am not impressed. I'm not impressed. Because when it comes all down to it, all these people and these individuals, I'm not against my neighbor, you know, or nothing, I'm not, but I'm just saying like, we have to think about this. Because the three quarters of an acre versus a half acre is a big deal. And to say, oh, the front city lots, these lots in a lot of these subdivisions that are getting developed are honestly pathetic. They're pathetic, guys. When you can barely fit a car and like two cars in front of a house and we're supposedly an outlined rural property? Like, why are we tightening up everything?
I understand your, your concerns, the public hearing part is done, you said you're going to.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm sorry, I got carried away.
Sir, just let me, just let me finish what I'm saying. You, if you have some specific points that you wanted to point out, that's fine, but the editorial part has to stop.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got carried away. But yes, so my, thanks for bringing me back. So I appreciate getting this map so I can.
The map we just got tonight.
So I can further review, yes, so I can further review.
And let me interrupt too, this is the first reading and there will also be another reading that you can come back to and we can bring these points up, so we're, we're getting educated up here, so.
I've never done this before, so.
You know, and some of this is, it just goes back and forth, we, we're getting educated up here as well.
Okay. All right, well, I guess that's just something and one other comment with, when you fill in wetlands, who is going to be responsible? Because there is groundwater there. So the city just take it on consideration, you approve that when those two people get wet basements or whatever and they are, because at the end of the day, you fill in it, the groundwater table is there, who's responsible? Do they go back to the developer or the city? So, something to consider.
So, and I, I guess this is just the rezoning, that's all, right, that's all we are talking about tonight.
Exactly.
All this other stuff.
Exactly, but no, with the rezoning, with the rezoning, those, there's two lots, if you spread those lots out, you're not building possibly over the top of the wetland, that's what I'm saying.
It, it's possible, but I'm just saying, all the other stuff, all your other concerns go through an approval process, just, you know, just like this goes through an approval process, but they're all, everything's looked at separately. We don't look at the engineering until we'd like, well, we're.
Okay, I, okay.
Look at what's appropriate first, so this is just the first step.
Okay, that, that's fine. So thank you for your time.
Sure. Any further discussion on this or questions or any information anyone wants for the second reading? Thank you. Moving on, license approval. Approval of an outside dance permit for Tailspin Bar on Martin Drive as follows, Thursday, September 16, 23 and 30th, October 7, 14, 21, 28 of 2021, from 6:30 PM till 9, guessing that's supposed to be nine, it's supposed to be 9:30 PM because that would be 10:30 PM of the code for music and comedy. And Saturday, October 16th, 2021, from 12:00 PM till 11:00 PM for Fall Fest.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, voucher approvals.
Move to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $65,820.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of $808,167.60.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Motion to approve wire transfers in the amount of $363,870.82.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. City officials report there is none, communications miscellaneous business is authorized by law, any updates for your liaison? Any future agenda items needed? Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned at 7:25. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.